All right, welcome everyone to tonight's board of commissioners meeting. It is August 7th and it is 6:00 PM. I will call the meeting to order and please stand and join me for the closing.
My pleasure to be here to speak to the life of the United States of America. And to be a loving, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
For everybody in attendance, it is always nice to see people here. And I've said it before, but I wish we could keep doing this. It's good to see folks in the audience. So first up on the agenda is amendment and approval of the agenda. And I have a couple of things I want to, well, also let me address Commissioner Herzog is on the phone. John, can you hear us?
Yes.
John, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. So Commissioner Herzog is on the phone. He was not able to make it in person. He's got a family emergency he's dealing with, but he is here by telephone. So I would like to move discussion, discussion action items. A, or I'm sorry, B, planning assistant position, and C, survey assistant position. These are nothing more than updates in job issues that are related to our ongoing budget cuts. So I'd like to move those two to the consent agenda.
O and P.
It was B and C.
And they'll be O and P.
Yeah, yeah. Anything from you, Jay? All right, Ted, did you have anything?
I was going to introduce, asked to introduce an agenda item called Public Safety Update. And to that end, I had sent an email to the sheriff yesterday and I said, "I'm planning to ask for the addition of a late agenda item at tomorrow's BOC meeting to address ongoing public safety concerns as we are all exploring alternatives to facilitate delivery of effective public safety to the citizens of Curry County. Specific current information will be helpful in this endeavor. Specifically, I request that you attend the meeting at 6:00 PM tomorrow and report on the number of calls that were received by dispatch during the weeks ending Sunday, August 4th. I ask that you be prepared to discuss how many calls were received and how they were dealt with. We are receiving information from numerous sources suggesting that many calls are not being responded to, and I wanted to give you the opportunity to clarify the procedures in the sheriff's office at the present time. If a future funding solution is possible, it is imperative that this information be reported on and communicated to the public on a regular basis."
So just so, your clear, Jay and John, I asked for that, I asked for that statistical information, that metrics. I know you guys are getting calls as well from the public asking how many calls are going unanswered, that type of thing. And I think it's important to share with the public so they understand what the impacts of the budget cuts that we're facing are. So that's why I asked for that information. I think it would be informative to us as we try to navigate providing as much public safety as we can with what we have, but also to the public to understand the limitations right now that we have. So that's why I asked for that information. Hopefully, we will get that soon. And as we do, I think it would also be good to have that as an ongoing type of an update so we can keep track and monitor that to make the best decisions. I also plan on asking for some additional statistical information, metrics, so we can continue to evaluate, make decisions, and hopefully come up with some ideas that we can enhance what we have with public safety. So that was my thought behind, behind asking for that. Anything else, Ted?
That's it.
Is there, is there any, do we want to?
Oh, we're not, well, I got, I didn't get an answer, so. I didn't get a response, so I don't have any, I'll just discuss some issues relevant to that during my, during the director's report.
Is there, do we want to, you know, well, I guess we can discuss at the end in Commissioner's comments whether or not we want to have something like this as a standing agenda item.
Yeah.
Add it on to the discussions portion. But, okay.
Yeah, we can discuss that in the form of a consensus.
Mm-hmm.
Any, any other agenda issues, Ted?
I don't, oh, yeah, I do want to add, I do want to add to the consent agenda, I need to add a late item, the purchase of redundant cooling system for the Curry County data center, which is directly below us. It only has one air conditioning unit in it on the wall, and that went out about maybe a month ago, and it was a...
It was during that heat streak?
Yeah.
Almost.
Just about fried everything we had. And so, so it's not, you know, it's obviously normal procedure to have at least two. So, so in that regard, we, I think Jay was able to contact somebody out of Brookings. Was it Coastal Air?
Airtech.
Okay, Airtech. So they came up and, Bill and I came up, ran hoses in, cooled it down, and got it back. Once the temperature starts going up and it gets critical, you're, you're into a, it was a, it was a closely run thing. So this will address that, so we won't have to, at least have a, more of a fighting chance.
So that would be Q.
Q.
Yep.
So we'll add that to consent agenda under Q. Anything else?
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
And I'll second it. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor. John?
I'm good.
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero. All right.
I'll second it.
Next up.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor. John?
There's a little bit of a delay. Hey, John, can you put it back on mute?
I'm good. Yes, and yes, motion passed three. Next, motion.
Play back.
All right. All right, next up on the agenda is service awards, and we have...
Sorry, I'm trying to watch it and listen because the phone's bad, so.
Maybe just...
There's a delay.
That's fine, just mute your phone and that way you can watch it and then answer accordingly. Thanks, John.
All right. Next up is service awards. We have a couple of them tonight. And first up, oh, you know what? I did forget one, one thing on the consent agenda too, and it's related to service awards. I just realized that right now. And that is, I guess I, we can amend the amended agenda, but I want to remove an item.
Which one?
So under service awards, citizen and community, we are honoring Sam Vitale, and he was not able to make it tonight. So I'd like to, I'd like to bring that back to another agenda when he can be here and, and do it, do it there. We can do the community one, but...
I don't think we have to amend anything at that point, then. We can do the recognition, I mean, I was, I was hoping, because it's going to be, I think there's going to be times when there's an organization or an individual who can't make it, and hopefully the person who nominated them can receive it upon their behalf and, and get them that award. But I don't want, I caution about getting caught up in postponing because that'll push the next one potentially back as well.
Yeah.
If we're going to try to do this on a routine basis.
Well, I think it's a great program and a great idea, but I'd really like Sam to be here so we can honor him in his presence.
So then, I would just say, let's, we can, I don't think we have to amend it at that point.
Okay.
I think we can just do the community organization and then add that to the next one.
Sounds good. Okay, we'll do that. All right, so first up is Tony Voughty, and if anybody doesn't know Tony, he's, he's, he's our Veterans Office Representative, and he's, he's, he's the guy with the big beard that takes care of our, our veterans. And Tony has been with us for 10 years this July, and we appreciate and value his service, so thank you for that, Tony. And next up is 10 Years of Service Christine Niall and...
Neil.
Neil. And Wendy is here to make this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Christine Neal, P.O. Neal. She's put in a 10-hour work day-to-day. It's family time, and her family's here with her to get this honor. But I'd like to share a little bit about Christine. Christine's maiden name is Mather, and that comes with a lot of history at Curry County. B.I. Mather was the clerk here. That was her grandfather. Her father was John Mather, who spent 36 years at the road department as an engineer. Her mother Sharon worked elections and then was RSVP. And her brother Taylor even worked for Commissioner Tost when there was a Park Summer Program. So Christine started her 10 years with the District Attorney's Office as a victim's advocate. We were extremely lucky to get her in juvenile probation. It's just not an easy task, and it calls you out at all hours, and when you're raising a family, you're a wife, you're a mom, and you do this job, it takes a lot. A lot of times, we get calls at 2:00 in the morning. This job doesn't end at 5:00 o'clock. So to find somebody for that task, Christine is amazing. She does that job very well through COVID. She worked 40 hours a week and then completed her bachelor's degree at Oregon State University. So she goes above and beyond. She is my right arm. I trust her when I am not in the office. So it is my honor tonight to present Christine with a certificate of excellence, and it is excellent for Christine for 10 years of outstanding service to the people of Curry County.
Thank you.
Extremely lucky. We are extremely lucky to have Ms. Neal, and we need to do everything in our power for her to retire.
Christine, thank you for all you do.
Yeah, thank you.
For all the kids.
Thank you very much.
Yes, did you want to say anything?
Uh, no. I've got two hungry little boys.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is our Community Organization of the Month. And Jay, you want to take that one?
Sure. So, so, so we started this with the idea of this last, last month, and, and the Community Agency of the, of the Month. Now, the idea is, of this is obviously in community organizations that they go above and beyond in trying to improve our community as a whole. And so Evan, Evan Kramer, well, first off, is anybody here from the Common Good? Beautiful. Would you ladies like to step up to the podium for just a moment?
Are we going to question them?
Yes. Yes.
We didn't know there would be a quiz.
It's a short one, super easy. So I just want to read this directly to you guys. So Evan says, "The Common Good serves over 100 people twice a month on Wednesdays and does an incredible job. We have a Meals for Neighbors program, which serves hot meals five days a week, including July 4th to, to currently 41 peoples a day, mainly older and infirm and need of a good meal. There is no charge for the service, so the organization relies on donations and numerous volunteers to keep people fed. Same for the Common Good." And so he wanted to make sure that you guys were recognized, and, and we do as well. So, thank you.
Can I make one amendment?
Absolutely.
You know me and numbers. I do the numbers. It isn't 100 individuals. It is 100 households that we serve. This morning, we had distribution, it was 101 households. Last month, it was 423 individuals for the month, so we're busy, so.
I'll say.
Fantastic.
And our volunteers do that in an hour.
Wow.
They've got it down to streamline, drive through, and they serve over 100 families in an hour. It's amazing.
Does that count wide, or where is it?
It's just Port Orford. We get people from Langlois...
That's great.
...to Over, but it is just Port Orford. And we've, Common Good's been around since the 1980s, and they've never paid any staff. No one's ever been paid for anything. I'm really super, super proud of that.
That's great.
That it, that it keeps going and that we keep growing, and we've all done it with just volunteer hours. It's pretty, we have some pretty impressive volunteers. Pretty cool people.
Pretty cool.
That's amazing.
When you said it was 100 individuals, like, wow, that would have been like, what, the first 20?
The first 20 homes.
The first, the first 15 minutes, the first 10 minutes. So, anyway, so.
Well, so if you can give me just one second.
I gotta grab your little, I don't have to hold my desk.
Time ago. That was before my time. And I've been there, what, 10 years now?
Of course they have.
Does, does.
Can I ask a question for the ladies?
Sure.
So how, do you guys work with Meals on Wheels, or are you Meals on Wheels? I'm not sure.
Two separate things. I mean, we help them with food, but they do, they take donations, and we can't do that. So we have to be two separate entities. We can't appear that we take money for anything that we do. So it's an odd system, but...
You can't take donations?
We take donations, but we don't...
Our clients, yeah, our clients can't give us donations. In other words, we'll, we will, we can provide you food, but it's a $5 donation this week, or we can provide you food, or whatever. Whereas Meals on Wheels, a lot of the people that receive the meals are paying very small...
Nothing close to what it costs. But they do pay a stipend.
Yeah, little stipend, whatnot, but yeah.
If they can afford it.
But we do take donations.
But it's a wonderful program. It's great.
Yes, get the word out.
And we do take, we do take donations just because.
And Evan that nominated us used to be on our board, so.
Oh, fantastic.
He's a volunteer. He's not with us anymore. He's with the Meals on Wheels, but he, he's a big part of it.
So I want to apologize because we didn't, we, we will have a new one of these coming because when we had it made, we, it was set to the Port Orford Food.
Okay.
So we will have the Common Good written on here, and so on behalf of the Curry County Commission, thank you for all you do in our county.
Oh, thank you. That's really great.
That's nice. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I should have mentioned one more thing. Besides giving out food, we buy shoes for kids. That's one thing that we're really proud of. But we buy shoes for the kids that go to school.
The school kids.
And we're good if they're in sports, or, this last week, we bought over 30 pairs of shoes for kids that are going to be starting school this year.
Do you determine what child gets the shoes?
Any child. They just say if they, if they're age three to...
Senior.
18, 19 through senior in high school. They're eligible, and we don't ask for any, any proof of it, if you need it.
So do you go to one school, or you go to one school district?
We have, it's a one school district. It's the 2CJ, and they come to us, we put an add-in, and then we measure feet and do all the little thing. And it's also ongoing during the year when the, the school often calls us if a kid comes to school with shabby shoes or something, they'll say, "Hey, we need, I think, size four. Could you get that for a little boy?" Or, so that's something we're really proud of.
Yeah. The volleyball team had all matching shoes. They were really jazzed, got all having matching shoes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we're moving into public comments.
Before we take public comments, I just want to remind everybody that you're limited to three minutes. Please keep your comments professional, avoid profanity. Commissioner Tost has a timer. There's a, yes?
We came from Banden, and there was a paint, they were painting stripes on the road, and it took us 25 minutes. The guy kept us waiting.
He didn't get a fill out of public...
I didn't get to sign in. Can we?
Yep, just...
Okay.
Yep.
Are you talking about, are you going to talk in a specific?
Yeah, windmills.
Okay, okay. Windmills, that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
The Don Coady of...
Chilting against windmills. Sorry about that. Thanks for the clarification. We're oddly enough stuck in traffic, which really doesn't happen around here very often.
Yeah, if you would like to make a public comment related to the windmills, just fill that form out. I will hold, hold your comment until we get to the windmill issue, and then you can speak on that specific issue.
Perfect, sir. Great, thank you.
You bet. So, back to general public comments. Again, I would just ask that you avoid profanity, remain professional. You can get upset with us all you want. Please treat our staff with respect and keep your comments to three minutes. There is a timer up there. You'll see a green, yellow, and red light. If you go over, I will ask you to conclude your comment. So first up is Victor Delott.
And maybe ask if they, if they have a specific topic they want to...
I already did.
Oh, okay.
Good evening.
Victor?
My first time in this arena. I'm 80 years old, and my complaint has been with Ted and with you now, Brad.
Okay.
And you know who I'm talking about. If you, I want me to bring up names and say personal things, I will.
It's your comments or whatever you want to say.
Okay. I'm dealing with Noah Bruce, who's my next-door neighbor. I have two homes, brand-new homes, on property separated by property line, and he's my neighbor. Okay? I've dealt with this for two years now. I've gone through all of your code enforcers, from Melvin through Corey, and through the times we had enforcement and times we haven't. I have built a house myself, followed all the rules, have my certificate of completion, while my next-door neighbor does not adhere to the rules at all, excavates down into the water table, diverts water from my property to his, creating waterfalls and little, you know, little exotic areas. Two years I've, I've gone complaining. Melvin has, Melvin came on site, took pictures, filed his complaints. I don't know what happened. It just seemed to go away. Okay? Now, this kid is, I mean, I call him a kid because he's half my age. He's belligerent, he's on mushrooms most of the time. You can't even relate to him on a one-to-one basis. And now he's opened up his property to rentals on Airbnb, Airbnb. He has upwards of 20 people on site. This is a RR10, single-family home situation, as my two are, and he's been not allowed, but he knows you have no enforcement. And he continues to do, thumb his nose to you guys. I've talked to, my wife's talked to Ted. We talked to you, Brad, an hour ago, two hours ago. You're very familiar with it. I have submitted 57 pictures of his violations from pile, from debris that has piled up from his excavating with no permit or erosion control, nothing. He's never filed anything, as far as I know, with you, with the county. Now, I've jumped through all the hoops, completed my house, got my certificate of completion, while this man has been allowed to, to create his own havoc. I've had, he's piled up 30 feet of brush within 50 feet of my new house upon the hill. He, he has created mountains of soil. He's taken his excavator, because his brother's own construction company, and has gone down six or eight feet into the water table to divert the water from my two wells.
So Victor, your, your time is up now, and, and the information you shared, you shared with me on the phone, is what you've shared with me now. So we will follow up on, on this information.
How do I get feedback from you guys? Because we call, you're the one, you're the first one that's called back, Brad.
And...
And I don't know what my wife said to get that off, to call in.
Well, I, and I will, I will look into this, and I will, I will call you tomorrow. I'm telling you right now, publicly, I will call you tomorrow, and we'll see if we can come up with a resolution.
Ted has the pictures. I think you have.
Well, I'll...
I've sent them to Corey, and I've sent them to Melvin.
I don't have the pictures, but I'm sure there's a file somewhere that I can find them. So give me an opportunity tomorrow. I'll, I'll work that in, and I will call you back, and we'll discuss this further.
All right, thank you.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
All right, Victor.
Thank you for listening to me.
You bet, you bet. All right, John? Is it Landon?
Lander.
Lander.
Say it again.
John Lander.
My name's John Lander. I've been coming in out of these doors for 44 years. I'm a contractor here. Started when I was 20, and now I'm 65. My concern tonight is with the planning department. And that's why I came in, was just to hear what you guys said. You were talking about hiring a halftime director, whatever. So I, it's very important to me that the commissioners work on a solution to fix the planning department. You know, I just ran through a few figures. For me, for 44 years, let's say I've built one house a year. That's 3,000 bucks or so on the tax rolls. You times that by 44 years, and each house, each year I build another house. So for me personally, I've probably put close to $3 million on the tax rolls for the county. Now, if you take 30 contractors, just 30, you know, that's putting us up into around 106 million. So it's, we're a real vital part of what's going on in the community. You know, I affect probably, just Lander Construction alone, I affect 20 different entities, from the city to the county, to all the different subs I provide for and the workers. You know, it doesn't look like much that I'm just a little contractor, but we do, we are important. And as I come into these doors, the brakes have went on. I can't do business. I've been eight months now on a minor petition, and I'm still, nothing's happened. And theoretically, you guys have cost me quite a bit of money because I have missed a window in the, in the real estate market with what's going on now. I'm not here to complain. I'm here because I want a solution, and I, it's very important to me to be able to walk through these doors and get answers, and not, I, I come in now and it's crickets. There isn't anybody that I can talk to, and the building department can't answer the questions. I need somebody in planning to answer these questions. I've dealt with the surveyor, and I've dealt with, you know, I've done emails to the guy that you've contracted to, but I hear nothing. I did meet with your surveyor. I had a real good meeting with him, Scott Knox, and I sat down Friday, and we actually got a one-on-one, and we got some answers. But like with Scott, his file's lost. He cannot find it. And to me, that's unacceptable. As we, we do our work, we turn our work in, we pay you guys money, and to have a thing that's lost, that's unacceptable. Unfortunately for me, my, my file wasn't lost, but I'm still eight months in. And so that's, I just wanted to hear what you guys, what your plans were, what your solutions were, kind of where we're headed. On a planning, for a planner, even if you paid full salary, if the planner was worth their salt, they're going to probably more than double or triple the money that comes through the doors by them just keeping us moving. If we can't move, we're not putting money on your tax rolls. And so that's where I am. I'm a frustrated contractor. I have to be able to do business.
I'm, I'm aware that Scott's file is lost as well. And it's unacceptable to me too, which is why, which is why we are, have reconstructed, we're in the process of reconstructing it. We're finally getting a person that's going to commit to actually doing the job instead of whatever's been happening there, which it's been going...
Is it full-time or part-time?
For right now, actually, he's going to be full-time. As I, he's going to be full-time going in, because that's, we, we have a lot of catching up to do. There, there have been a lot of applications that weren't followed up on, and once we were made aware of that, that's when we, that's when we, well, we've been working on, on a variety of different approaches, some of which haven't been successful. So we've had to kind of come back and rejigger the whole thing and, and get personnel that are going to be committed to completing the planning process for people and, in a timely manner. And you know, a lot of these things, as you know, we have these statutory timelines that, that the county is bound by as well. So I don't understand, I don't understand what the, what, what purpose might have been served by dragging feet at every, at every opportunity. And so we're, we're trying to address that because, because generally, if, if we, if we start the process and then we... we miss our timetable, then you are granted default approval. So we...you know, we want to...that's why, when you come in and you give us money and the clock starts ticking, that actually was what wasn't happening. People...that clock wasn't started to be ticking. So now it is, and we're...and we're slowly digging ourselves out of that. But it's a...it's an embarrassment to the county. I agree.
It's also challenging to work with the financial restrictions we have, John. So I know you have a lot more experience in this than I do, and if you have any recommendations or solutions, I'd love to talk to you.
I would love...I don't have any answers. I would love to sit down and share my experiences with you.
Yeah.
When I first started, I walked through...my three minutes are probably out, but you know, Merritt Newdahl and the other building inspector at the time when I was 20, you know? I brought in the scribble, and they said, "Here, young feller, sit down." They drew some stuff on it, and they said, "Here, that'll work. That'll pass." So they stamped my simple drawing. But over the years, it has just gotten hard. And if I wasn't stubborn, if I wasn't bullheaded and keep pushing...
Yeah.
I would quit.
Well, you're not the only one that has this complaining problem, so I...
I'm complaining.
Well, and I...
And when you get in the...
Yeah, no, and I'll correct myself there.
When he starts complaining, well, now.
I'll...I'll correct that word. But you are describing a problem that is frequent and others have complained about. So if we can come up with a solution, and again, you have a different level of expertise than I do, and if you have a solution or you have a recommendation or others do, I would love to sit down and talk with you so we can try to come up with a resolution with the finances we have today. That would be...that would be great.
I'd love to sit down.
Sounds good. Thank you, John. Next up, Joe Wilson. Joe's very familiar with the podium.
Here's the...some old comments for the windmill item. I'm Joe Wilson, and one thing I'm not going to talk about is how old I am. The...last Wednesday, I came down here and spoke in the workshop about potential levies for funding law enforcement. As you know, I've been working with the sheriff on that, and I've made a number of suggestions of possible advisory votes. We all...I think it's understood that we're up against a very hard deadline, and we're already beyond anything being put on as far as a levy vote, save for November, or a special district, or anything of that type. There's still the potential of an advisory vote if we do it, you know, very quickly. I recommended a number of different items we could look at. I have driven...I have personally written ballot titles and legislation in the past, so I...you know, as per county code, 1905, I believe Ted, it states that the county commissioners are the only ones that can put on an advisory vote. So I want to offer volunteer services to help write any potential advisory vote that we could put on the ballot before that hard deadline. And so, you know, if you want to call me at any moment or any time, I'll be down here to help you with that. It wouldn't take very long to do it, to be honest. Once I know what your mind is, as far as what direction you want to go, because it's up to you as far as that direction. Any questions?
Go ahead. So I'm glad that you actually are bringing this up, because...so here's the thing that is kind of the conundrum with this, Joe, is that the advisory committee that Sheriff Ward was putting together actually needs to provide the framework on what they expect...what they're trying to access information from the public about. So now, yes, the commissioners are the ones who can vote to put it on, but what we rely on is for...you're the committee, because we don't know what the committee's drive to know is, right? We don't know what the committee's wanting to look forward to and potentially in May. So what we need is the committee to organize, get those...get that information, create that ballot title, and then bring it to...bring it to this group to then discuss and potentially vote on. I think for me, that would be the best-case scenario...
Okay.
Because we don't know exactly what it is that the committee is trying to achieve.
Okay. So my question is, there is a group of people working with the sheriff. Is that the committee you're speaking about?
That's...
Is there another advisor? I don't know.
No, that's the committee, Joe.
Okay.
So the sheriff...when the sheriff was here, he said, "I've put together this committee..."
Right.
"...and we're working..."
He introduced you guys.
"...and we introduced you guys, and we're working on this stuff." So if you or the committee, along with the sheriff, have something you want to put on the ballot, then just bring that to us. We'll vote on it.
Okay. I will get ahold of the sheriffs tomorrow, and I'll try to have something on your...before the week's out. Now, what is your...you know, I know that you brought up about the 16th being a hard deadline as far as putting something on the ballot. So it's...what is the deadline? What is your drop date? When would...tell me when you need something in front of you to review and make a decision about.
Well, I think...so today's meeting, we're discussing the Boam advisory question, because today's meeting gives us enough runway to get it to the clerk and do any...
Can I have till Friday, Ted?
Information.
I don't see why not.
So yeah, of course, Joe, of course. The issue is always, so you come up with the advisory question, and then we end up voting on it, and then it gets submitted to the clerk, and then it goes through that process, and then it's rejected.
When would you like to have it in front of you on Friday?
Whenever you get it to us.
Whenever you can get it to us, and so...
You tell me, I'll be here with it.
And then we'll get with the clerk, and if we...if you know of a...well, actually, what we can do is coordinate with you maybe early tomorrow to where, if we need a set meeting, we can put out a notice and have a meeting.
So should I contact Ted, and Ted will tell me when the meeting and time will be to make the presentation?
Well, I mean, if you...so let's think about this. You guys know what you want to write?
Well, I laid out a number of options.
Wait, some of the...
I was looking to you guys for guidance for what...because you're in control. I mean, this, you know, it's county code. The board of directors decide. The county commissioners about any advisory. And I didn't know what you found acceptable. There's so many different ways.
Well, there were, and it was not...it wasn't...I guess it wasn't clear which direction the sheriff wanted to go. So we support the sheriff. We support law enforcement.
I know that.
100%.
Yep.
So we just need...we need the sheriff to make that decision about which direction he wants to go and what that question should be. And if you can formulate that question, Joe, and then bring that to us...
Okay.
Then we will vote on whether or not to put it on the ballot as an advisory question.
Right. So it's your decision.
So what I heard at the previous meeting, though, was there were two things that were kind of confusing and contradictory, because you had the special district...
Right.
And then you had the special service district. And so I think if we ask those two questions, it's going to confuse the public. So I think you have to pick one.
This is what I would like, if y'all would allow, and that is, I will get with the sheriff and see what direction he wants to go in. I mean, number one, we don't want to waste anybody's time. There are certain things that are DOA, as far as I'm concerned, and to have an advisory about it when we already know the answer...
Yeah.
Waste of time.
Of course.
We need to look at the best direction, maybe give y'all a couple of options, and look at your input, what you...
Why don't you just talk to the sheriff, get that...whatever you get together, and then call me?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And so you will hear from me tomorrow.
Okay.
And...
When I say call me, that means Rabia.
What was that? Hey, by the way, is that a new buzz cut you got there?
I know, my wife did.
She looks pretty good.
So Joe, just contact Rabia, and then she'll set it up.
So can I get your number and everything, and then I will be ahold of you? What time do you start tomorrow?
Anytime you call.
Okay, I'll...
She's always...she always works.
I'm retired, so that might be early for me, but I'll get ahold of you early in the morning, and we'll go from there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks.
Next up is Dave Barnes.
David Barnes, I could have saved a lot of that. I met with the sheriff and Lieutenant Crone this morning for about an hour or so, and we discussed this at great detail. We don't think it's in the best interest to put...being as rushed as we are, we don't think it's in the best interest to put an advisory question on a November ballot. It would be better to wait and have things put together and go before the voters in May. There's only a couple of days left. The sheriff is out of town. I'm not sure how long, but he's at a Sheriff's Association meeting, I believe, next week possibly. So his input is limited in this, and we want to make sure that we get this right. We started discussing numbers this morning. We discussed what kind of district it would be, what it would include, and we're just getting started on this. We decided we're going to try to...after August is over, the first week of September, we're going to try to get the committee together, the sheriff has asked to be part of this, and have a meeting and really get started on this. But to put anything on the November ballot right now, we just...the three of us think is very rushed and premature and would advise against it.
Okay. So how about Joe, if that changes?
Well, I had a conversation with the sheriff this afternoon.
Come on up, come on up, come on up.
I think that, you know, there was a moving one, that what we have here is a failure to communicate, and I think that's what we have right now.
So I think Dave's talking to the sheriff. The sheriff and I are talking. What I would like is that give us till tomorrow, and we'll have a meeting with the sheriff, and then we'll come back with whatever the suggestion is.
Perfect.
I haven't been talking...
We're open...we're open to however we can help, Joe.
Yeah. John told me that Dave was going to contact me about what y'all talked about, but I never heard from you, John.
We haven't yet, nope.
I didn't know about it.
The rest of my day got busy, so...
We're here to help however we can, and you just let us know.
So you will hear from us tomorrow...
Okay.
And I'll get your number, and after I talk to John and Dave and everybody else, then we'll get the ball rolling.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Joe. Teresa.
So I'm Teresa Simon, and we have a place on Social Security Bar. I'd like to thank you for all your help, especially Ted. He's been working with us and trying to help us out and everything like that. Things are slowing down. It's better anyways, but we still do have, like, for a couple of weeks, we had a homeless person in there, and they were mutilating the trees and building the steps and doing what they do. They're busy. And then, of course, we have our normal people that, you know, like to run around and throw out their trash and stuff like that. Just trying to get an update on anything. Do you have any information?
I...
Oh, go ahead, Dave.
I do a little bit. So we were working with the City of Brookings to take over the management of the access point, which included some of the areas that butted up against the private properties. And they...it was...we wanted to postpone, holding off, you know, finding out budget and everything else, and while they were in the middle of their city manager search. They've now solidified a city manager, so I think it's prudent that we probably reconvene those discussions. Having already taken responsibility for the bar, it makes sense to move forward and try to develop the access point. And so I just wanted to give you kind of a heads-up on where we are in terms of gaining traction in that aspect.
And then we also have...so we've sent the surveyor down there, and he's finished, and so we're talking about where we're going to put the signs up to determine, because the real issue is, is whose responsibility, where private property ends and where the county's leasehold begins. So we're going to designate that, get that done as soon as possible. You know, we did...I mean, we worked a little bit on the dip. We got some rock in there. There's a bunch more stuff that I'd like to do, and I must admit that with the lack of law enforcement, I...you know, I was hoping I'd be able to get down there myself and do some more drive-throughs, you know, when you're out there, and it does make a big difference. And when people get established, it's pretty hard to get them out. I know up where I live, the only way that we stay ahead of it is we...you have to go on daily patrols and engage the people, but, you know, that's all private property up there. It's a different scenario than what you're dealing with. So it's problematic, and we're going to...that's part of, as we go forward with this, with, you know, when we figure out how to...how to get effective and efficient law enforcement out there in the areas that the county has responsibility, this is one of the ones that I'd like to look at, if there's a way that we can perhaps contract to get that done so that we have a presence there, because it's not going to take much...it's really not going to take much to get that place back out of the Wild West, but it is going to take a little something.
Right, right.
One thing I thought...one thing that I...as far as the leasehold goes, that we do need to have control of the access, so if we can get some cameras up there, all of a sudden, the trash dumping is going to be an issue of the past, because we can then follow up there. There are various landscapers, or I'm not sure who's doing it, but it's large amounts landscaping waste that is just dumped up there, and it's, you know, it's a byproduct. It's somebody's business, and I want to find that person...
Okay.
And have that talk with them.
Well, I'll reach out to the new city manager and begin those discussions, so we can start getting that back in front of them as an agenda item as well, so...
Great.
We would all go through and clean it all up and everything like that if we thought there was any hope.
Right.
For sure.
You know, but I mean...I mean, you know where we're at.
Yeah, we're coming. I'm coming as fast as I can. I got that old Jeep hauled off.
I know you did. I was impressed. I was impressed. Yeah. But I mean, I just...I want it to be somewhere where the people want to bring their children...
Right.
And not...
Well, and you have people actively interfering with, you know, other people's access while they drop...they...they'll fall trees on the private property to impede access or to create more adventures for themselves. And so all of that stuff, just we need to have a better...we need more signage. One of the ideas that some of the locals were talking about were signage on the bar itself, because, you know, people get down there and go crazy on the gravel bar, and it's super...some of the places, some of the things that they're doing is really dangerous. And so I think we have to take...we have to, you know, at least express some sort of control over that so that we can say that we tried.
Well, and there's...as you know, there's numerous businesses that rely on that bar for their fishing guides.
Right.
And, you know, so we want to make sure that it stays a viable access point and also a recreational point, so...
And the thing is, though, that, you know, I don't think there's anybody around that doesn't want that to happen. You know, we want people to come in there and swim. We want people to fish. We want them to...that's what it's all about. That's why we bought a house there.
Yep.
You know?
Yeah, so...
It wasn't to make everybody go away.
Right. No, I know, and I think that's the common vision that we have to just stick to. You know, it goes back to that adage of valuing it for the people who value it.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I don't know if we...is it possible, maybe, but then again, if you got a trash dumpster, I'm sure it would get filled very quickly.
That gets...that's a tricky...
By the right person.
That's a very tricky topic, because it also attracts a new level of trash collection.
Right.
Well, I think that's...I mean, you want to wait till you have cameras in place, too. That's...
And some supervision.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Alcor, can I just quick update? I heard you told me...
Sure. Come on back up, Dave.
David Barnes again. I was hearing from Jeremy...Lieutenant Crone. Sheriff Ward's out of the office until the 19th, so I think that kind of makes it moot point. If he's not going to be here to be for discussions and everything else about the question, I think it kind of makes it moot at this point.
Okay.
So...but I will tomorrow morning, Joe, and hopefully Joe's available, and we'll and we'll meet with Crone and continue the conversations that we started this morning.
Dave, I can get ahold of the sheriff, so we can set up a conference call.
Well, you guys, you guys can work it out and then let us know how we can help you.
Yeah.
And that'll, that'll work.
Please stop rushing this, I can get ahold of him, Dave. So can I.
All right, so that will conclude our public comment on general items. And um, I know there's some public comments for the windmills, and we will give everyone an opportunity to make a comment related to that. I, I know we went a little over our three minutes, but I tell you what, I really appreciate the opportunity to interact with uh, with the public on some of these issues. So thank you for your patience on that. Moving forward in the agenda, next up is the consent agenda. And um, I do have one item I want to discuss briefly that's on the consent agenda, and that is, uh, it's number M, which is approving a hire of emergency manager. As you know, um, Ashley Thien, our previous emergency manager, she went back to Arizona. Uh, I actually spoke to her this afternoon and she's doing well. Uh, but that created a vacancy and we had someone apply from the sheriff's office, one of our deputies who had to be let go due to the budget cuts, and that is Jeff Hughes. He is a very experienced veteran deputy. He's worked in other parts of Oregon. I, I think he's pushing 30 years of experience now. So uh, he has quite a bit of experience managing emergencies with that level of law enforcement. So uh, I had a great interview with him and we're going to move forward with hiring him. He starts on Monday and we are, we are thankful to get him back, get him back uh, with Curry County in that role. So um, especially at this time of year when we have so many fires. So anyway, I just wanted to make a comment on that. I know some of you have been curious, you knew Ashley was leaving and the status of emergency management. So Jeff will be here on Monday. That's the only discussion I had on the consent agenda items.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Yes.
And yes, John, can you hear us?
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero.
I think there's a, I think there's a way.
I do too. All right, that takes us to the public hearing that we have next, and this is another annexation, uh, public hearing. So uh, what I need to do now is um, read from this script. This is a public hearing before the Board of Commissioners conducted pursuant to ORS 198.857, annexation without election by petition of landowner. Do I have a motion to open this hearing?
I move to open this hearing.
I second it, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
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 And yes, motion passes three to zero. It is 6:52 and it is uh, August 7th and this hearing is now open. Uh, we have eight annexations into different rural fire protection districts. And we have 24-19, uh, Jeffrey Blanthorn, 24-20 Crosby family, 24-21 Dunlap, 24-22 Connolly, 24-23 Blair, 24-24 Williams, 24-25 Dunlap, and 24-26, I'm going to say this wrong.
Yakovlov.
Thank you, Yakovlov. Do any of these owners wish to speak? Do we have any public comments related to these annexations? No owners wish to speak, no public comments.
Okay, well, I will, so we have to read each one of these individually. So I will move to approve number 24-19 Jeffrey Blanthorn into the Ofer Rural Fire Protection District.
I'll second it. Motion and second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero.
I'll move to approve number 24-20 Crosby into the Ofer Rural Fire Protection District.
I'll second it. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero.
I'll move to approve 24-21 Dunlap into the Wetterburn Rural Fire Protection District.
I'll second it. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, passes three to zero.
I'll move to approve 24-22 Connolly into the Ofer Rural Fire Protection District.
I'll second it. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero.
I'll move to approve number 24-23 Blair into the Ofer Rural Fire Protection District.
I'll second it. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero.
I'll move to approve number 24-24 Williams into the Ofer Rural Fire Protection District.
And I will second it. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero.
I'll move to approve number 24-25 Dunlap into the Wetterburn Rural Fire Protection District.
And I will second it. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero.
And I will move to approve number 24-26 Yakov, say that again?
Yakovlov.
Yakovlov into the Wetterburn Rural Fire Protection District.
And I will second it. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero.
I just want to make a quick comment.
Sure.
Um, for some of the people that may not, so I know we, a lot of people are here to talk about the um, the windmills, and I'm going to keep saying this every time we're doing these mass approvals for uh, to, to annex into these fire districts. This is number 26 of this year, and um, this is, this is generally because of the risk, uh, the fire risk mapping that had, that was done through the Oregon legislation that identified uh, uh, fire risk areas. Um, and, and basically, um, in my opinion, uh, provided an avenue for insurance companies to not underwrite their, their insurance on those properties and um, forcing them into annexation in some cases. And not only that, but a lot of people need to understand that, that um, that little piece of legislation that created that, that fire mapping syst, that fire mapping um, uh, project was, has had, has had incredible um, detriments to our rural areas. Uh, we now have new building codes uh, for individuals wanting to build, making it more difficult. You have to use fire resistant materials. Uh, you have to have defensible space, which means if you buy a piece of property, then your neighbor is within that hundred feet span and they do not want to cut theirs down, then you possibly cannot build. Um, it is an effort, um, it's an underlying effort, I would say, to, to try to minimize rural living or rural escape to living. Um, and I think um, it, it can't be overlooked. And so anybody who's seeing this, anybody who's listening to this, do some research, look into this fire mapping program, um, and, 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 you know, we need to, this is something that we will end up having to severely push back on. And when, when we did, we pushed back and, you know, we, we, as, as commissioners said, you know, hey, uh, pretty much every one of the fires that we've had in the last 15 years have started in state and federal lands. Not on private lands. Private landowners are good stewards. They take care of their lands. The people who aren't are the ones creating, uh, creating the problems that are endangering us, and we, the people, are having to pay for that mismanagement. And we need to, we need to, we, I just, it's a little soapbox, but I, I want to keep saying it over and over every time we do these annexations, because I can't stress enough how important this is for people to completely understand.
Jay gets really fired up about this, and it's legitimate.
So, and I, and I know, uh, I, I agree, I agree with everything that Jay said. I know Commissioner Herzog does as well. It's very frustrating, uh, and, and, and it's just unfair, you know?
It is. And we are going to look to, well, that fire mapping may come in to our advantage soon.
Yep.
Yeah.
We may be turn that into an advantage.
We may. Okay. All right, well, thank you, everyone, for your patience on us working through that uh, annexation, those annexation uh, issues. So uh, now I need to conclude uh, the public uh, hearing on the annexation at uh, 6:59 hours, and then we will go back into our regular agenda items at our BOC meeting. And that takes us to discussion, action, items. And first up is the advisory question for the November ballot. And I have several comments related to that. And um, we will start with Joe Wilson.
Could I go last? There's people who have gone a long ways to come down here.
Joe, if you want to go last, you can go last.
Okay, thank you, Brad.
Mary, uh, how do I say your last name, Mary?
Can we make it a rule that Joe always has to go last?
Uh, Mary, is there a Mary here?
How about Marty?
Marty, I'm sorry.
There you go.
Marty.
He looks like a Mary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He sounds like a gender, a gender fluid or something.
Marty.
You're fluid to yourself.
Marty, I'm going to, I'm going to call you Mary, Marty, okay?
Yeah, okay, so I'm Mary Marty, and the last name, and the last name is pronounced Kurt. The H in the center is, the, the H in the middle is just for confusion purposes, and it's obviously worked, so there we go. Uh, hi, Marty Kurt, Banden, Oregon. Uh, we just went to the Coos County Commissioners Meeting yesterday, and we got all three commissioners to agree to put the wind advised, the wind turbine advisory measure on the ballot for the general election. We've been working on it for like a year and a half, and we finally, through all the rallies that we've been doing and all the people that have shown up, and we got a lot of people to show up for this meeting, we finally convinced them that it was in their best interest to at least ask every single voter in the county what they thought of what they're trying to, what Bowman is trying to do off your shores. We have 50, 60 people that are constantly active about this and constantly protesting, and we had a meeting at the Sawdust Theater in Kokil that was put on by one of the commissioners, and oddly enough, we had the place packed, and it was uh, people from all sides of the, all sides of the aisle, people that were far left, far right. Everybody came to that meeting and said windmills are a bad idea. Now, the reason you want to put an advisory measure out there is there are a lot of people that just don't know this is going on. Every time that we go out in the streets and hold up signs, people will stop and say, what are you talking about? What in the heck do you mean they're putting wind turbines off the coast? And then we start explaining to them all the horror show involved in that. You know, it's a fee and tariff system where if all these things blow up and there's billions of dollars of losses, the taxpayers eat it, they don't eat it. The investors never lose any money. And all this kind of stuff that people are just not aware of. So I would advise you, I'm not advise you, I would ask you to make sure that you vote to put this on the ballot, because the more people that know about this, the more push that back there will be, and the less likely they're going to be able to railroad us into doing this.
Do you, you have, is your um, ballot title completed?
We have it.
Yes.
I have a copy.
We have it.
Yeah, and I actually like the one you guys wrote. Yours is like, yeah, there, yours is better. So I'm, I'm jealous, you wrote a better, you wrote a better ballot than we did.
Well, we had some pretty good help with it. I won't say who, though.
Yeah, was, was the guy speaking last, perhaps?
No.
Oh, okay. There you go.
Absolutely not.
Oh, absolutely not, okay. Um, and then just on a side note, this has nothing to do with windmills, and since I have a little bit more time, do you mind if I just?
Go ahead, Marty.
Um, yeah, it's getting a little late to the, the 16th deadline to like, get an advisory measure on there, especially since there's a lot of balls in the air regarding the sheriff and the levy and the, uh, you might want to think about doing an advisory measure that's like a multiple choice thing, where it's like, well, would you prefer this, or this, or this? And then come May, you can formulate the question for the actual like, tax levy or levy district or what, however. But what you can do is ask all the voters, is like, if you were given these options, which one would you like best? And then that way, everybody gets involved, they know what the problems are. A lot of people don't understand that, like, Curry County and Coos County are so far in the hole, you can't keep the jails open, you can't keep the police on the, you know? It's like, what are we going to do to bring in revenue now that we can't do forestry and fishing as much as we used to, and so forth and so on? So you might want to just do the, you know, pick one from, you know, you have your, it's a multiple choice test. Which one do you like best? And then you can roll that into what you're going to do in May. Because to try to get something done in the next couple of days, it's just.
Yeah.
It, it's going to be impossible.
Yeah.
Thanks, thanks for the time.
Thank you, Marty, and thank you for the suggestion too, appreciate it. Uh, and we do have some, and Joe, I'll talk to you about this uh, as well, but we have some, we have to get that in the newspaper too, so we have to take that in consideration. Uh, next up, Diane Rich.
Hello, gentlemen. You know, we started about a year and a half ago protesting against Bowman bringing the wind turbines here on the offshore situation. And as others have said, this isn't just a Republican or a Democrat issue, this is nonpartisan. We need to stop this thing. And unfortunately, the federal government has brought in different colleges. They've given Washington State University $5 million. They wrote a outcome-based survey that I received and took copies of, if anybody would like to see it. It's written so that in the end, you say, oh yes, we must have green energy and wind turbines are what we need. We need to get this on, and the way that we can show people that the people on the coast don't want the wind turbines is by putting this question on the ballot. And it's really the only way that we can do it, because we're not being given a grant for two and a half million like OSU or five million like Washington University to stop this. Um, the other counties aren't going to get any of the power. The power's going to be very expensive, and of course, anything that they make over what they're proposing that they'll make, they'll give to California anyway. So all I see is a loss for Coos, a loss for Curry, a loss for Douglas. So if we can do anything we can to prove that the citizens that live here don't want this, all the better. And then it's really up to us to show the citizens that don't even know what's going on. And quite frankly, that's got to be 80%. Because, you know, we're out there hour after hour, and people will come up and they're completely oblivious to the fact this is even going on. So we need to, you know, get some, an awareness program that's, that's even better than what we've, we've done with grassroots. So we would really appreciate your support and assistance in getting this on the ballot, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Diane.
All right, next up is popular podcast host, Rob Taylor.
Oh, not that guy. Man, if he wasn't my driver, I wouldn't be here.
You know, the most dangerous thing you can hand an Irishman is a mic. Didn't I get a stamp from you at the fair booth? Is that your second job?
Work release.
Work release, that's good, good thing. Rob Taylor from Banden, and I want to thank you, gentlemen. We've been fighting this for a long time, and I think it was you, Jay, that was on the phone with Craig Rucker? Wasn't that you?
Yes.
Yeah, and so we know that more than likely, this is going to head to court, okay? This is just pretty much where you guys can look to this, and we've got allies out there, allies who are fighting this on the East Coast. We are now forming a national group with the people on the East Coast and the people on the North Coast, and there are groups out there like the Pacific Legal Foundation, who are probably more than likely and willing to help us once we get into this battle, because you know how expensive these lawsuits can be. And I think the Indian tribes, the fishing industry, the seafood processing industry, all of it is, all of them are, as far as we know, are against this. And in fact, I am sorry, on my pay, the paper that I signed, I put opposed, because I was thinking I was opposed to the windmills, not opposed to the advisory question. I, I want you to pass this, and I do have experience in this. In 2012, I don't know if you guys remember the Banden Marsh expansion, where the O, uh, the U, US Fish and Wildlife Service came in and said, we're from the federal government and we're going to do what we want. And from the mouth of the ocean on the Kokil River, all the way up to the four mile marker, they wanted to get all, rid of all remnants of man. And the first phase of that project turned into one of the worst mosquito outbreaks that we've had ever. And yeah, and it was bad, it was really bad. One of the smartest things we ever did, though, is before the election in 2012, is we put a, the commissioners put an advisory question on the ballot, and the question was very simple, do you want the U, the US Fish and Wildlife Service to do the Banden Marsh expansion? And it was a 70% turnout, 72% of the voters said hell no. And that project, all of a sudden, dried up. Coos County was the, the smallest county ever to, to defeat the largest wetland restoration project on the West Coast. We knew that we had something here, because you can use this vote as a blunt force object to bash in their, their wall of resistance that they're going to come at you with. You know, you're going to have those corporations coming at you, and you get a vote of 60 to 70% of the people saying hell no, what corporation is going to want to come in here and least call areas? You know what I mean? This is a huge thing, and like Diane said, they've already given money to the university. It was originally going to, 2.5 million going to OSU. And guess which department they gave it to to do the survey that they were going to do? The psych department. Yeah, they were going to do a psyops on us, so no matter how you answered the question, it was going to come out, you were in favor of the windmill project. This is what we need to counter all of that BS that's coming at us, because they're going to come at us with every, everything they can, and I think we can defeat them if we can outmaneuver them on the ground. And I think we can defeat them if we can outmaneuver them on the ground. And that's what we're doing. It's a, it's something that the governor supports and the six agencies. Uh, HB forty-three seventy-five, which was the windmill bill that created the plan to bring those windmills, those wind turbines in here. They, they set a goal of twenty thirty to have three gigawatts of power coming off the ocean. That's in the bill. And even though there was a study at the end of it, the study said, like, all the agencies are saying, we have great concerns. However, we think there's viability to this project. We need to defeat that because we know it's not true. And I don't know if you've heard this. I know you've been working with our Commissioners in Coos County. Bob Main just told us la, yesterday that, uh, they're gonna create an LLC for each one of those wind turbines, all two hundred and sixty-two of them. Each one of them is gonna create an LLC. So if there's any damage done by those wind turbines, they can just declare bankruptcy. And then they don't have to worry about any damage that they do. These, this is the kind of crap they're doing. They hate us out here. Let's face it. Portland, Multnomah County, Salem, they hate us out here. SB seven sixty-two, that mapping bill, that's one of those bills that they're using to destroy rural Oregon. And so I, I highly recommend that you pass this. And I thank you so kindly for your time.
Thank you.
Next up is Joe Wilson.
Well, at least I'm getting my exercise today. The, um, I went up to Coos County and testified against the windmills and foreign advisory. And I gave you all, all of y'all have seen what was passed in Coos County last, uh, yesterday. You have the, um. The resolution that they approved the advisory vote. And I agree with my friends from Coos County that I think ours is better here in Curry. Y'all have done a lot better job writing it up. As you know, um, I was in the, uh, heavy industrial steel fabrication business for over fifty years. And was on the Board of Directors of the Western States Petroleum Association Associates. I was a vice chair. I was a lobbyist for the oil companies. I know how the game is played. Pat mentioned about one of the contractors approaching you about a dog and pony show in Scotland. If I was a lobbyist doing that, you'd be smoking Cuban cigars over there and back. They pay attention to public opinion. That's why they are doing that. That's why they're spending that money. They know that public opinion makes a difference. Right now, there are, where there are bids, RFQs going out for windmill projects, offshore windmill projects. And they're being canceled because the businesses are not submitting bids. They're not getting enough bidders because they realize because of public opposition, because of the costs. Uh, it's a disaster. I mean, they're closing beaches on the, uh, east coast. I'm probably, I'm running over time, just let me know. And, um, they're closing beaches because the windmills are falling apart and coming on the beaches. And if they're all LLCs, all each little windmill, and then it starts coming apart and they go bankrupt, who's gonna clean up the mess? I mean, right now I've heard some number and it's, you know, it's up in the air. I mean, this is a beta test. This whole thing is a beta test. We really don't know the harm. Anyhow, it's very important, you know, today in the ballot poll about the windmills, eighty some, eighty-two percent, the last time I saw it, against. But we need to get the word out and we need to tell these companies, these multinationals, that the people don't support it. And especially with the, if we, it is gonna go to court, in my opinion, if they keep going ahead with it. And with the Chevron decision and that Grants Pass decision giving power back to our local communities. I think we can win in court and having the tool of an advisory vote showing in both Curry County and Coos County. People are against this thing. It's gonna mean a lot in court.
So thank you, thank you, Joe. Um, and, 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 um, I, I wanna, I wanna tell everybody, I wanna share something with everyone here, Joe. And, um, and I wanna tell you guys exactly where I stand on this. All right? What I wanna share with you is I wanna share an email that I got this morning. Okay? I got this email this morning. I got it at six fifty-three AM. It's from Ryan Nelson.
I got it too. That's what I was.
And, uh. And.
You said you need to on that one.
So Ryan is a political and legislative representative. With Laborers International Union of North America, Local seven thirty-seven. And Ryan identifies himself by that. He says he has a concern, and I'm summarizing here this email. Concern about the potential ballot measure. He goes on to say that the county has no legal authority to ban offshore wind projects. And that we will face costly legal challenges and that our county has no potential to win. He talks about the offshore wind and its incredible potential. It's exciting and it will make all of our communities stronger. The benefits, the economic development, it will bring thousands of jobs.
Temporary jobs.
Temporary. Workers would gain important experience, leads of lifelong careers. Don't, this is the part, this is the part that, this is the part that, um, and my point. Don't waste voters' time and county resources. Okay? So I gotta tell you, when I hear that, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna cuss, Natasha. But when I hear that bull, that tells me that the right thing to do, absolutely the right thing to do, is to put this on an advisory. Uh, on a ballot as an advisory question so that they, Bowman, hears the people's voice.
Thank you.
So that's my position. Jay, you brought the same email in?
I brought the same email in, yeah. I was gonna have some conversation about this email, but you, you, uh, you know, um. You said it pretty good. I think that, you know, generally it, it, it starts with, um, the, uh, the, the offers, the whining and dining. The opportunities that Patrick was, uh, presented with. And then it good, turns to the, uh, to the, and the baseless threats. Um, I find it, uh, interesting that, uh, in the same sentence that he says, uh, that you don't have the authority to ban offshore. The next sentence is you will end up in court. So I, you know, uh, if we didn't have, if there's no authority, then why, why? So at any rate, um, yeah, so I, I don't, and I, I don't, I don't, I don't do well with ultimatums, as some, some know. And so, but I wanna disagree with Joe. Um, not just because I like disagreeing with Joe, but, um, when he said, we don't know the devastation that these things will cause. We absolutely know the devastation that these things will cause. We know that they will destroy our, our way of life as we know it. We know that they will destroy our ability to look out at the ocean and see what we currently see today. We know that it will destroy our fishing lanes. We, we know it will destroy ev, and so, and, and, and when, when, when RWE, right, I believe it's RWE. When they came to, you know, the, the question was, I said, look, this isn't a question for me. This is a question for the people. And, you know, I said, look, you, your job is to convince the people they're gonna get more than they're gonna lose. And there's not one way, there's not one facet, there's not one ounce of, of opportunity that I can see. Where, where this community is going to gain more than it loses. We're losing our, our way of life, our cultural way of life. That's not okay. And that's definitely worth standing up for. And so, you know, I, I, I applaud, um, Lynn and Patrick in all of the effort that you put into this document. I know you worked with Ted and Ruby as well, uh, the, 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 the effort. And, and also in, in the community, in bringing it forward and pushing to, to have this put on. Um, to present it and, and as an idea to, to, to push back with. Um, you know, and so for those who don't know, uh, we did, um, call them into coordination. Based on the nineteen sixty-three recreational act. Now, we, we followed up with an email recently and said, hey, can you confirm that you received this resolution? They confirmed receipt immediately, even though I had been trying to get ahold of them, no, no, no return. They were immediately and said, would you like to discuss further? The comment was, yes, I would like to discuss the plan to coordinate further. No response. So what I am gonna say is, what I would like to do is, before we pass this. Also instruct Mr. Fitzgerald to send a demand letter. Acknowledging in a coordination process to move forward with that coordination process. They, they, they have to coordinate. And so that's the, that's the one piece. What we haven't done is sent the demand letter. We've asked, we've done those things, so.
Let's do it.
If you're in consensus.
Yep.
Um, I know Ted doesn't have a problem drafting a demand letter.
One of his best, one of his best qualities, actually.
No. Um, and so I just, I just wanna hit that first, so.
Well, and you mentioned what, you mentioned what we know, right?
What we know.
You know, we know the damage it's gonna cause. We know the impacts of that. But here's another thing that we know. We know the people of Curry County don't want this. We know that no one's listened to us. And this question will provide the proof beyond a reasonable doubt of that. So, uh, I couldn't support this anymore.
So.
Brad?
Yes.
Did anybody, uh, that fellow's email?
What's that?
Uh, I answered that fellow's email this morning and told him I absolutely disagree with everything that he wrote in that email.
Good.
Well, that's great. I was just gonna send him an attachment of the ballot title.
Do it.
Cuban cigars.
Right. But one thing I would like to discuss, and, and John, you can't see this, so I'm just gonna read it. Um, but the ballot title that Coos used, um, was essentially, um, should county commissioners oppose to, work to oppose installation of a ninety-five square mile deep water floating wind farm off our coast? And so I just wanna consider the question piece, right? Cause that's gonna be, that's vital when it goes on. That's what people see. That's what people read. So I just wanna make sure we get it right as well, right? So, um, the one that we're proposing says, should offshore floating and wind turbine development along Curry County, Oregon coast be stopped?
Yours is much more plainer because what Coos did turned a, a yes and no to the opposite. Yes means no and no means yes.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, I wrote, I wrote it simple and then everybody got involved and it turned into word salad.
Sure.
Well, at least we got something passed, but I'm not really happy with it. Then I read yours, I'm like, I wish I would've seen that two days ago.
Yeah, so, um, I feel really good about it as well. I think, um, very intelligent individuals crafted this and I feel strongly behind it. Um, and I am, I'm ready to move forward.
Let's do it.
So I will move to approve, I wanna read this correctly for, uh, Ryan. Let's see here. I will move to approve the adv, advisory question for the November ballot regarding wind turbine development.
Second.
All right, motion in second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, motion passes, three to zero.
That's.
All right.
Out of curiosity, did you send a copy of your thing to our Commissioners? Cause I can't if you haven't.
No, we haven't.
Okay, I will.
Please do, because rub it in their nose. I mean, what the heck were they thinking? I mean, what's that had done? They were on the deadline.
All right.
Thank you guys and, uh, drive safe.
Yeah, thank you.
Careful that road going up toward. I'll be back to you.
Well, we know the paint stripes are fresh.
Drive safe.
Yeah, Joe, get ahold of me tomorrow, Joe.
He's just sending the sign home or something.
All right. Moving forward in the agenda, Ted, you're up next with, um. Variance action. Yep.
We're just kind of changing the process that the way it's been him. We wanna make sure all the variances go before the county commissioners, so they aren't decided in a vacuum and that, and that, um.
Hold tight, Ted. Lynn, do you mind closing that door?
And that the public's gonna have a cha, have a, have a chance to weigh in if necessary on those things. Kinda take it out of the hands of, you know.
Single individual?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
How often do they meet to make these decisions?
They have a meeting scheduled bi-monthly, every Thursday at five thirty. We're asking them to change that time to something that's a little more convenient for, if we could do it during office hours, so we don't have to pay, um, overtime like we do right now. And, uh, with our current economic situation, that's, we're asking them to look into that.
But they are meeting twice a month?
They do when necessary.
Okay, so, so it's not gonna hold up some?
No, no.
Okay, perfect. All right.
So I'd be looking for a motion.
I'll move to approve the, uh, variance actions to be approved by the planning commission.
And I'll second it. Motion in second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, motion passes, three to zero. Ted, next up is, uh, short-term rentals.
We propose a hundred and eighty-day, day halt on the acceptance of short-term rental applications based on the, on the number of complaints and the, and the citizen, uh, input that we've received in recent meetings about, about short-term rentals. And how they're, how they're being, um, uh, approved and, and put into, into place. Um, we're asking that, that, uh, pause be put into effect effective, effective today. And, um, a hundred and eighty days from then, we, we can look at that. Essentially, we're gonna, we're, um, we wanna look at, we wanna look at the way that our ordinance, uh, potentially conflicts with land, existing land use ordinances, the various, you know, we, like, our ordinance doesn't cover, um, doesn't cover resource ground, that sort of thing. I, I don't know exactly how we're gonna, we, we wanna look at how all that stuff interacts. And, um, and right now it's difficult to administer, especially with the amount of funding that's available to us. So we, we wanna, we wanna basically try to perhaps look at making this more akin to, um, like, uh, regulation of a hotel. Right now, it's more, it's a land use action and it doesn't seem to lend itself, but in reality, people are coming in, they're operating a business and a lot of, you know, we have, we have corporations coming in from worldwide that are buying, buying houses in, in Curry County and then operating BRBOs out of them. So I think we need to be, uh, aware of that and, and, um, kinda grapple with that in a little more direct fashion.
Okay.
So this would be for?
The ones, the, the.
It's in the rural growth?
No, this is for, this is for everything in the, in the, that's in the county, not, you know, just in the, the, ever, people that are applying for, uh, short-term rentals within the county, but.
Right, but the only type, the only place they're really permitted is within the ru, um, urban growth boundaries, like rural, what is it called? Riviera? The areas where they're, they are.
Like, it's not, it's not permitted on forestry grazing, for example, right?
But it, so they're really, it's just the, the growth bound, the.
It's gonna be Harper Bend, it's gonna be Naseka Beach, that, those areas are the, are the ones that are the most, most heavily affected. And now there's some areas around Port Orford as well.
Yeah, and Harbor.
Yeah.
Yeah, I definitely, uh, one thing that we would be, I would really like to look at at some point is, um, is, uh, out-of-county owned. Uh, we talked about that, essentially out-of-county owned, um, business licenses and, and short-term rentals would come under effect with this as well.
And maybe that's, that's the thing we can, we can kinda start looking at that issue through this lens perhaps.
Yeah. Um, because, you know, you hate to tell somebody that they can't do something with their land, with their land. But we also need to be able to put in some, uh, bu, guardrails.
Right.
That help preserve the locally owned, um, as opposed to the out-of-county owned, uh, investment properties, if you will, that are.
This is the same issue I faced on the city council in Brookings. And the key word I think is balance. This is the same issue I faced on the city council in Brookings, and the key word, I think, is balance.
It is. No, it's, it's definitely balance.
Well, if you drive, if you drive up and down 101, as I did today, you will find out that they've discovered us.
Yeah, yeah, it is pretty busy, right?
Yeah, so, I, I, I definitely, you know, I think that if we move forward to the, the, the halt that we, um. We try to shore up some of those, um, guardrails so that we can still, um, have income-producing properties, but not to the point where it is, uh. Burying our locally, uh, local citizens from being able to, uh, access homes as well.
Yeah.
I'm, 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 I'm good with, and I like the idea of, of temporary halt, not a, a long-term, um, closure. Or as some, some places have done, as a percentage, right? So, um, if it, if it exceeds a certain percentage of homes in the area, um, then they close it off.
Right.
Um, and those are, those are, I think, um. Not as productive. So. I'll move to approve the 180-day halt on short-term rentals.
And I'll second it. Motion in second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, motion passes, three to zero. So that takes us into the next agenda item, which is a fair board appointment. And this is an item that I put on the agenda, and as you know, I am on, uh, the fair board. We have two seats that are open right now, and we, uh, definitely need to fill those. We have an applicant who I conducted a personal interview with a few days ago. And she is Shayla, how do I say the last name of you?
Kudlak.
I always say it wrong, and Rabia definitely corrects me when I do. Shayla Kudlak. So, uh, Shayla has some pretty significant experience with 4H. Um, she's also a lawyer, and we can definitely use a lawyer on the fair board to ensure that we're following our, our laws, our policies, and our ethics, uh, commitments. She's the, uh, city attorney for, um, Bandon. And what's also very important to me is she's a resident in North County. So we would have a, a, a voice and a presence of North County. So I think this is a really good fit for the fair board. Uh, I really enjoyed talking with her, uh, a couple days ago. And what I'd like to do is, uh, appoint her to position seven, and that's a term that expires, uh, 12/31/25.
Well, I'm a, I'm a big fan of Shayla. I, I think she brings a lot of value, um, intelligence, and, um. You know, she's, she's, she's sharp, and she will add value, certainly.
All right. John, any, any discussion?
Oh, I'm a big fan too. I've known that, uh, McKenzie family and Kudlak family for a lot of years.
All right.
Before we vote, I do wanna just say that, that it is true that we have a very good resource for pronouncing weird names, and that's Rabia.
We, we do.
Thanks.
We do. So I, I would make a motion to, uh, appoint Shayla Kudlak to position seven on the fair board.
I'll second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Yes.
And yes, motion passes, three to zero. Next up, Director of County Operations update.
Um, well, I don't have too much to bring. I was, I was hoping to be able to discuss in more detail, um. The issues that, that were discussed early on with the, with Public Safety Update. I have been in, um, as you know, in the last meeting, we were made aware of, we were made aware of the, um. Of the potential of, of selling a vehicle to Josephine County, a canine vehicle. And then during that meeting, we learned that we had transferred, uh, canine animal to, um, Josephine County. And there was no, without, you know, that's county property, and that has to be handled through the county commission. I followed up with, I followed up with, uh, uh, the sheriff of Josephine County, got directly in touch with him. And we, uh, worked out a fostering agreement, we're in the process of that right now. So the dog is, the dog is safe, and the dog is being fostered there by an experienced person. Uh, while we consider the alternatives for the animal. And, um, also, we worked out a, uh, hold harmless agreement so that, so that while the dog is out of Curry County control, we won't be, we won't be, um, exposing the county to the liability that we were being exposed to with no, with no agreements in place.
Okay. All right, so, uh, regarding that issue, I, uh, made several phone calls myself. I spoke to the canine vendor, I spoke to, um, other people involved. I was also able to gather quite a bit of information. But I wanna hold off on discussing that until the sheriff is here, so we can have that discussion with him. Uh, but I do have quite a bit of information on that. It's very confusing, and I look forward to the opportunity to talk about that.
I just wanna let everybody know the dog is, the dog is safe, and I'm, and I feel comfortable with where, where it's being housed right now, so.
Yep, yep. And, uh, also, we've been in contact with, uh, Brookings PD Eagle Beach. I'd like to reach out to Port Orford still, um, but that, that's, that's still kinda working in progress. But again, uh, I think in all fairness, it, it would be best to discuss that in detail with the sheriff here. Any other updates, Ted?
That's all I have for now.
All right, elected official updates, no one's here other than Commissioner-elect Hollinger. Would you like to make a comment?
I would, actually. A great meeting. I just wanted to, uh, say that, uh, I'm very proud, and I reached out to Terry Hughes, who is the, uh, um, the manager there over at the fair. And, uh, I sent her a message, uh, a few days ago, just saying, "Thank you very much for stepping to the plate and getting volunteers and making this a very successful fair." I also wanted to thank everybody here at the county as well, um, Rabia, Natasha too, especially because they really coordinated a, a strong effort to get county employees to go and volunteer and take shifts. And, uh, I was very happy and, and privileged to be able to, uh, take a shift over there as well. Uh, I made a, uh, made it a, a, a plan to ask everybody as they were exiting during my shift what they thought about the fair and how it went, and, uh, overwhelming thumbs up and smiles. So, I, I, I hope that when you guys see Terry and you, and you cross paths with everybody who volunteered at the fair this year, please give them a big thank you, and, uh, um, tell them that they did a good job because it's, it was well-deserved what they're put together this year. So, that was my only comment for tonight, so, thank you, guys.
All right. And I, I, I think it'd be good to get Terry in here, uh, soon and get a, kind of an update on the, on, uh. The outcome of the fair.
Absolutely.
I, I think that would be, I think that would re- really good, attendance, uh, funding, all that kinda stuff, so we'll plan that in the future. All right, uh, commissioner updates. Commissioner Herzog, do you have anything?
Nothing, sir.
Jay?
Um, a couple things, so, um, just to touch on what, what, uh. Patrick said, um, first off, thank you for volunteering down there. We had rodeo night, you had, yeah, we were, it was there, and, um, it was busy. And I, I do, I do wanna second the, the fact that, you know, um, everybody worked really hard, the board, um. The individuals that you mentioned, um, maintenance, the maintenance crew, the roads, the roads crew, um, Ted. Everyone, um, really put in a lot to, 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 to make that what it is. And, you know, I think one of the best attributes of what Terry said to me afterwards was, it'll, it'll only get better. And that's, um, that's the kinda growth mindset that I think, uh, follows through with that as well, so, um, kudos. Uh. You know, the other thing is, is, um. You know, I've been on several different boards, as, as everyone probably in here has. And, um, one thing I wanna acknowledge is, um, you know, not often do boards, um. Offer in- interaction, uh, that accompanies public comment. A lot of times, I've seen a lot of boards that just, um, allow for public comment and then do not have any, uh, any response um, or dialogue about those public comments. They just shove them until the next week, and, um, I'm, I'm glad that, as chair, that you, you allow some of that dialogue to occur. Um, because I think. I think it's, it's vital. I mean, this is the one, two, two opportunities a month, essentially, that we have, uh, to have full-on dialogue um, with, with, with individuals, and I, and I just, I think it's important. So I just wanted to acknowledge and thank you for allowing, uh, that as you run the meetings. Um, the only other thing was what we discussed. I'm giving out compliments today, Ted.
Okay, all right.
Uh, the other thing we discussed was, um. Composure, um, was consensus on, um, having Ted, um.
I'll write the letter.
Right, but we were, we had discussed, we were, at the beginning of this, we discussed consensus about a, a topic, and now it's fleeing my mind. And we said it would just address it during commissioner comments. Um, and it was regarding one of our topics. Do you?
Was it the recognition?
Yes, yeah, so, um.
What'd she say? She didn't remember.
The recognition.
Recognition.
Of Sam.
Yeah, and so. Um, I just wanna know that, um. We, we're, every, every month, um, we're taking, uh, recommendations on individuals or organizations that are making a positive impact in the community, and we wanna make sure that those people get highlighted. So please, um, email in those, um, send them in, call, whatever, whatever's best for you, um, those recommendations. It's, it's, it's important that, um, a lot of times that we take just a few moments out of our day to recognize somebody who's making our community better. So, please take that opportunity.
And I just wanna say, in the future, if you're gonna be out in the sun, could you not, you, the glasses seem to have had like.
It's a good look, though.
Sun.
Good look.
Sunblock. I'm sorry, man.
It's a good look. Looks like you were on vacation, but. It is a good look. Anyway, anything else, Jay?
I think our cameras aren't HD.
Anything else?
No, I have nothing else.
All right.
So, good advice, so, Ted. Um, so, uh, uh, just a couple things, um, regarding the fair. I just, also, everybody in the county did a good job, but we had some community members that really stepped up. Jesse Flovan saved the parade, literally. Um, maybe when we get that update, we can convince him to come in here for a minute, uh, and, and I know, uh, some other folks helped him too. And maybe we can encourage them to come in with him and, um, give you guys a, an opportunity to talk with him.
Is that a nomination for community member of the month for September?
It might be.
Okay.
It might be.
One thing that we didn't fully acknowledge was, um, the law enforcement presence, uh, at the fair. Um, from, uh, Gold Beach Pe- Police Department and.
Yep.
And the Brookings Police Department, um.
Completely different this year.
Yeah, I think that was.
Had no issues. Yep, we had no issues. And Chief Hensley coordinated that, uh, the ideas, uh, were, uh, out of lipstick. Uh, and Chief Hensley and Sergeant Frischall did a great job, uh, putting all that together and scheduling it. And, i- you know, it's also an opportunity. We had, we had different departments working together, and we need to have more of that. And, and, uh, Chief Hensley did a, did a great job there. So, we'll, we'll work that into our full report on the fair when we get, uh, uh, get an opportunity to do that. I just wanna, uh, I know for people watching at home, I want to remind, uh, people that we have two community events this weekend that are, uh, important. And one is, uh, the Brookings Police Department has the Prowl and Growl Canine Fundraiser. We, of course, support the Brookings Police Department and their canine program. Uh, that's up at Salmon, Salmon Run. It's at, uh, 10:00 Saturday, and, uh, tickets are still available to that. Uh, Natasha, uh, from the county here is also helping with that, so you can reach out to her if you're not sure where to go. Um, but that is a, they have a great program, uh, Officer, Officer, uh, uh, Patrick and Duke are, are, they do a great job, and.
Behringer and Nova.
Yep, and, um, they have a great program, so any, any donations, uh, really helps them, uh, meet their training needs and, uh, and keeps their program going. And I know they wanna expand it too, and they wanna add another dog, so it would be awesome if they could do that. That keeps all of our officers safe. And then the other community event that's coming up is the Pirate Festival. And that's down in the port, and that is, uh, Friday. That starts at noon. Um, and we all know there's, um, there's music, there's vendors, there's, uh, all kinds of stuff happening down there. Saturday is, uh, 10 to 8, and then Sunday is, um, 10 to 5. So, uh, just keep that event in mind. Um, it's great for our, our businesses, our, our restaurants, and, uh, generally a good time. So, if you're not doing anything, there's a couple really good events to go to.
We have one more very big event this weekend coming up as well. And it's the Gold Beach Fire Department's annual breakfast. And it will be on the 10th and the 11th from bright and early in the morning until about noon. And it's gonna be located at, uh, the Gold Beach High School. So, please, uh, show up there and, and give them your support as well.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Lot going on this weekend. Look forward to it. Anything else? Jay? John, anything else? I'm gonna take that as a no. All right, thank you, everyone, for coming, and we will adjourn the meeting at 7:46. Thank you.